The City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, April 17th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson.
Here.
Baldwin.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Lindsey.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
White. Do you have a form?
Yeah, Logan informed me that he wasn't able to change a work meeting, so he will not be able to attend today's workshop. So you are aware. And then I also need an agenda change, item number three. If we could amend item number eight to change the language to the piece of paper that you have in front of you. If somebody could change the language, we just need to adjust that. If I could have permission to do so.
I'd like to make a motion to change line item eight to motion to move into a closed session pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight E to consult with the city attorney regarding trial strategy regarding the lawsuit filed against the city by Maplewood Hotel, caption Maplewood Hotel Corporation versus City of Sagatuck and interim city manager Ryan Cummins, case number two, four, six, eight, seven, nine, five dash CZ, because discussing the pending litigation in open session may have a detrimental financial financial impact to the city.
A second?
Yes, second.
Okay.
Voice vote.
It's a voice vote, so that is just changing the language. To update that, if everyone is in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, any guest speakers today? So you could, if you're not a scheduled guest speaker, you can speak during public comment. Okay, that sounds great. So we are on to public comment on agenda items only. So if you could come up to the podium, speak your name and where you live. And again, on agenda items only.
Ted DeGraff. I own the property at four oh three Water Street on Main, right directly next to the park. And kitty corner for kitty corner from Catherine Simon. I've got a couple tenants in my building that are very concerned about all this stuff in the street. First of all, I'm in total support of the new park. I've been here for thirty two years. My kids grew up in that park. I've watched them forever and now they're fourteen and seventeen. It was a really safe park. I thought it was really aesthetically nice for the town. I was under the understanding that the park was not going to be bigger than the footprint that it currently was, but now that's not the case. It's greater footprint. And I was really bummed out that you guys took that big, huge Christmas tree down, which was a gift to the city many years ago. So that has come down and they used to light that. And so that's a little depressing to me. The aesthetics of the park, are they right for the town with reviewing what it looks like? It's obviously two stories, which I think is unsafe for toddlers. Looks like it should be in like a Holland or Grand Rapids or Chicago location. I don't know who picked the park. Do you guys know who picked the park or approved the park? That's a question of mine. Was there any public discussion that went through with it? Because aesthetically, I think it looks like it should be in Disneyland. You know, it looks like a Disneyland park or anything I see in any other town. Aesthetically, I don't care for it. I do want a park, but the two stories with little kids climbing this, I don't know if any of you had kids grow up in the city, but I certainly have. And two stories climb would be awkward. I think kids will get hurt. I don't know if you gotta have a lifeguard on duty for kids to climb two stories. But I know with that one slide, that big slide coming down, the little kids like to climb up the slide and then there are kids going down the slide. For the other slide, you could see the kids coming up and down. I think it's a little bit dangerous because some of the kids are gonna get hurt. I'm sure of that. You might want to look into your insurance liability as well for the structure that's that tall with just the bars and possibility of kids falling down, getting hurt. Another point, Main Street.
I'm sorry Ted, your time is up.
Okay.
All right, if you have anything else to add, you can, the second council comments, but not right now. All right, thank you Ted. Anybody else want to come on up to the podium?
I'll be quick and it won't be a lie this time. Usually I say I'll be quick and then it ends up using the full. Item six. Oh, sorry, Dan Fox, City of Sagatuck. Grant and Elizabeth. Six eight on the proposed budget. And I am the very first to admit how desperately challenged I am on anything to do with budgets. So with that as a caveat, I wanted to request that, and I know this is the, this is a draft or early or whatever, I don't know, not a final document. But when it gets to a final document, it would be a big help, I think, to a lot of people and to just a general understanding, if it's at all possible, to have some sort of executive summary that groups these expenses. And laying all my cards on the table, in particular, legal expense, which appears by my quick look through all those pages in five or six different places in the draft, never totaled. I'd be interested in that total. I think a lot of people would be interested in that total, but not just that. I think other major expense categories, if they're spread across multiple units or however that is within the budget, totaling them up is just helpful. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you Dan. Anyone else in the audience?
Kelly Roach, four thirteen Hoffman Street, and I'm on PPW. I'm absolutely heartbroken over what's happened with the playground, as are my kids, the friends and many local families. I'm actually physically sick over this. From my heart, I'll speak for myself, we just wanted something really great for the city and our visitor. The old playground had been left to rot, was inspected, and the word catastrophic was used in the report. So we prioritized a new playground in the same location. The main priorities based on the feedback from Village Square Study Group and local families were safety, wider age range of use, two to twelve years old, and universal accessibility aspects of which the approved design has. Our meetings have been open to the public. We looked at four vendors, got renderings and quotes from two. PPW took the vendor that was approximately a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars less expensive and we received a grand of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. The design went through all the channels as advised by city officials and with unanimous approvals from PPW, council and historic district. The approved design was on the front page of the Hall and Sentinel, the commercial record, all over social media, as well as hosted on the city's website. We met with the Historical Society to partner with them to tell the unique story of Singapore through the new structures. It has been the same design as submitted and in the public domain for well over seven months now. Other than positive and excited comments, the only email PPW received was from a mom who was disappointed that this was for very young children only, which it's not, it's from two to twelve years of old. The playground was decommissioned in January and we even created a banner with approvals from historic, which has never been done before and had a QR code to keep the public informed. Then we set up a community build, which traded our sweat equity for the discount of thirty five thousand dollars for the city. And I worked on securing eighty plus excited volunteers and food sponsors over the last few weeks. We even had kids in the build. Never did I think that something that was unanimously approved as an amazing modern play space for Sagatuck would turn into this nightmare. Our vendors have never seen anything like this in all their years in business. I find it so sad that this level of commitment, hard work, community support and positivity in the last few weeks has become stress, legal costs for the city, black eyes for volunteers and absolute disappointment for our children. As I stand here, the community build should be completed. This has left a gaping wound in our downtown where awe and laughter and joy should be existing this minute. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly.
Thanks Kelly.
Anyone else in the audience?
Leonard Young, Sagatuck Township. I was fortunate to have one of the best mentors that anyone could ever have in grad school. His name was Dr. Vern Seifelt. He was the director of the U Sports Institute and I had a graduate assistantship in there many years. And I remember him pulling me aside and saying, you're going to be a leader, but you should know there's lots of people willing to criticize and not many people willing to lead. So you need to learn to be a duck. Let the words and criticisms and misinformation roll off your back like water on a duck. I've been called ignorant and clueless, a freak, deviant and weirdo, but that's another story. But I haven't, I haven't been sick or lost sleep because I had this wise advice that I heeded. But, so I urge my friends and the members of council to be a duck. Ask what's good for kids, another word of advice that Dr. Seifelt always gave me. And especially ask what's good for our community. Thank you.
Thank you Glenn. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? All right, is there anyone online, Jamie, that wishes to speak?
Okay. All right, and at this time, I would like to have, we are on to the discussion item for the draft of the proposed fiscal year budget for two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five. Ryan and Peter.
All right, well, thank you Madam Mayor and I have a presentation that the city clerk is gonna pull up that we'll kind of go through. We've also printed the slides for you as well, so you have something to take with you and take notes on. And maybe we'll go to the next slide. So as one of the speakers kind of noted, this is kind of a, you know, essentially one step in a multi-step process and looking at your budget. And really this process began really in December when you, you know, were taking a survey of the community's priorities and things that they, they thought that you should focus on for the year. From there, you held a strategic planning session and provided some, some direction to staff and the priorities that you had, at least for the calendar year. And then your charter actually requires that the department heads submit a requested budget to the city manager in early March. And so we sat down with each of the department heads and we had those discussions. And then ultimately the charter requires that the city manager provide to you as a council, a proposed budget closest to the third, you know, Monday and April, which is kind of some interesting language that that's in there. But essentially this is your meeting, you know, closest to that third Monday. So this is a proposed budget. So this process kind of from here will involve me kind of presenting the staff proposed budget to you and then gathering some initial feedback. And then from here, it's kind of up to you. We have individual meetings with certain council members if you have specific questions on the budget. If you as a council want to reconvene and provide some further direction to staff as a whole on what you'd like to see, you know, in the budget or move from the budget, we definitely welcome that. And then ultimately, you're required to have a public hearing before you adopt your budget. And that's to be scheduled and you have to adopt the budget before the end of June. So as we get towards kind of finalizing, you know, your changes and presenting it in a public hearing, we certainly will provide a good summary document. So folks going into that public hearing are all aware of the actual budget that's being considered for actual adoption. So this is kind of a, we're in the middle of the process here. So. So next slide, Jamie. So really as we, we kind of work on preparing the budget, there's kind of a few kind of overriding purposes as we, as we develop it. One, we want to make sure as we're budgeting that we're allocating public resources over time and amongst our public operations. Certainly we want to make sure that we have accountability to the public for the expenditures of public funds and have a budget that we're working off of. And then ultimately we want, you know, maintenance of financial stability for the city as well. So along those lines, there's kind of some overarching guiding principles that, that the council in the past has developed. You know, there's some kind of detailed statements there related to each of those, but really we're looking at, you know, fiscal responsibility, maintaining, improving the public's infrastructure and facilities, making sure that we're providing the types of services that the city would expect through friendly, honest and transparent government, that we're positioning Sagatuck as a recreational and cultural center that attracts visitors. And I appreciate the prior councils also noting how important the city's employees are and that the prior councils have indicated as far as a policy priority that the city's employees are its most valued asset. So those are kind of the guiding principles as we worked on, on developing the budget for this upcoming fiscal year. Your budget has six separate funds. We have a general fund, which is really your largest fund and kind of the catch-all for most government activities unless they're kind of specifically in one of these other buckets. And that's where most of your, your, your general services and governmental functions are at. You do also have a major and local streets fund and we'll talk about those as well. You do have at least one debt service fund as it relates to some prior bonds for road funding from several years ago that, that you've been paying on for several years now. You have a separate water sewer fund that's combined. We're gonna touch on that fund today as well. And ultimately you have a, an inter-service fund, the motor pool fund, where dollars related to maintenance of your city's vehicles and purchase of vehicles comes out of as well. So, you know, just for, I mean, I think you all know this, but for anybody else that's maybe watching, you know, we have a lot to the organization here, even though we're a small community, there's a small town here, there's still a lot of folks that are behind the scenes doing this work on a day-to-day basis. We have eleven full-time staff. Season's ramping up, so you have five seasonal DPW maintenance staff that, that they're working on, bringing on for the season. Twenty-five seasonal Old Beach staff. And then we have a lot of contracted partners that help us get our job done as well. We have contracted city attorney services, we have contracted sheriff's deputies, we have a contracted planner. And then one that's, I didn't make it to your presentation, Jamie, that I updated. We also have assessing services that are contracted as well. City at a glance, you know, the things that we're kind of keeping in mind as we're preparing a budget, you know, we, while we do have a census population at eight sixty-five, we know that the population swells during these warmer months from, from folks that maybe own second homes. But then we also certainly have our day-to-day visitors that we're prepping and preparing for as well. You know, we have a close to one and a half square mile city here with nine hundred and sixteen housing units, very healthy median household income, median ages at fifty-eight, lots of park space to maintain and, and watch over, nearly twelve miles of roads, a lot of water utilities, sanitary sewer utilities and storm sewer utilities that were responsible for maintaining and upkeep as well. So I think one of the, the, the common questions that kind of come in is, well, you know, you may hear this probably from your constituents like, man, I'm paying so much in taxes. And that may or may not be true from each person's perspective, but I think one thing that's important to really note and delineate is that, you know, the city may collect a lot of these taxes, but we're not keeping all the taxes that, that you pay. So in fact, if you have a principal residence exemption, you know, only thirty-seven cents out of the, each dollar that you provide and property taxes actually stays with the city. The other portion of it goes to all these other taxing entities, you know, your schools, county, libraries, fire district. And then if you have a non-principal residence exemption, then a quarter out of every dollar actually stays with the city. So you may take the heat and say, well, man, you're, I'm paying so much in taxes to the city, but we're, we're keeping a chunk of it, but it's a much smaller chunk and the rest of it's kind of just passed through to other taxing jurisdictions.
Ryan, so when you say the city, it's a city's operating funds?
City, city operating and then you, there's a separate voter-approved millage for roads. So, yep.
Okay.
And then there's a separate millage amount for those road bonds that the city had taken on several years ago. So that kind of speaks a little bit to the next side. So the next slide actually will show how does our operating tax rate compare? So this wouldn't include that, that road, road millage funds or that debt service. But just looking at, you know, how does our operating tax rate compare? This is actually a chart from your, your budget last year. We're still waiting on the finalized millage amounts for this year. But you can see, you know, as we look at other areas, you know, cities, how we compare our operating tax millage amount is, is near the bottom. In fact, you're actually kind of capped out and so as heavily keeps rolling you back, it continues to go down. But you can see that our operating tax rate here is, is much lower than, than a lot of other cities in the area. So as we look at your general fund, you have multiple different kind of departments with, within the fund that we track funds. So certainly we have, you know, a fund set aside for our, sorry, department within the general fund for the council, city administration, the city manager, we have planning and zoning, we have Old Beach where we track fees there, Old Beach concession, we track revenue, or I'm sorry, expenses for certain area police. Any transfers out, so a lot of different areas that are, that are kind of before you in the, in the detail that we provided in your, your meeting packet. So today I'm going to kind of just touch on some highlights in each of those areas. I'm not going to go through each one in full detail, certainly willing to meet with you or, and discuss more detail on each particular department fund if you'd like, but we'll stick with the highlights at least for today's presentation. So as we look at your, your general fund balance, we kind of take a look at, you know, how much do we have in savings? How much do we actually have in cash reserves? And so the city has a very healthy general fund balance. I mean, you have a little over five point eight million dollars essentially set aside in savings and cash reserves. A million dollars of that is restricted for, for parks-related purposes. And my understanding from talking with the treasurer, that's kind of by vote of the council and a policy decision that a previous council made to kind of restrict a million dollars for parks-related purposes. In fact, I think, you know, the treasurer is gonna kind of have a discussion with you here in the next couple of months related to how you want to apply some of those funds at the Village Square Playground and whether you want to kind of take that off of that, that million dollar policy position or if you prefer that it just kind of come out of the more unrestricted portion of your general fund balance. Rose Garden is also another restricted fund balance area. Otherwise unrestricted, you know, you have four point seven million dollars in cash reserves and savings. So again, very healthy and we're always trying to balance, you know, what do we need to maintain, you know, to really keep in that kind of rainy day fund? What are we making sure and keeping our savings? Because you never know, the economy can do all kinds of crazy things. You know, one of your revenue sources could be greatly impacted. Say we, we, we had something that impacted Old Beach, that's a huge revenue source, right? So keeping enough in your rainy day fund to, to maintain your services and keep things going, but also trying to find the right balance of how do we make sure that we're not, you know, keeping so much money in there to where we're not, you know, deploying those tax dollars that they're giving us and to, you know, maintain the, or improve our infrastructure and maintain things in a way that they're really expecting. And so my understanding from the treasurer is that, that there's kind of a policy position to keep at least a million dollars total in reserves. Again, that's still, you know, very healthy amount from a percentage perspective. So you have some money to work with if the council so chooses. So as we look at the proposed budget and general fund highlights, we're estimating that your operating millage will be reduced this year to ten point five eight, ten point five eight eight mils. That's a decrease of point two one five mils and that's, that's because of that, the heavy rollback. We are expecting that we'll have an increase in property tax revenue and that's largely to do to the five percent CPI increase that the state of Michigan requires as it relates to the taxable value of your, your property. They're, they're indicating that that's the inflationary rate that, that we have to apply to the, to the bills. We don't really have a choice on that particular matter, although you're gonna see a reduction in, in the millage rate, which will offset some things, some of the. Permit revenue over prior years is up. There's a few different reasons for that. Largely last year, you approved some zoning historic district fee schedule adjustments that were pretty significant. So we're seeing an increase in fees that kind of offsets some of those planning and zoning costs that we've had. You've had street dining that where folks are paying for the actual parking spaces and use of those that, that's resulted in chunks of dollars. And then going into next fiscal year, you know, the, the additional increase in short-term rental fees is also going to have an impact on your permit revenue. Interest income, we're expecting a hundred thousand dollars there. Could be higher if interest rates, you know, kind of stay here or, or go up. I know there's kind of some interesting discussions happening around that. This isn't really, you know, probably solid revenue to, to count on long-term. Interest rates are higher now than they have been historically. Historically, the city hasn't brought in this kind of interest income, but it is nice to have. And certainly while you have savings and you have dollars that are sitting there, let's at least let it work for you a little bit and fight some of that, those inflationary pressures. This year in your, your general fund revenue side of things, we're looking at applying those federal and another grant dollars as it relates to the Blue Star Trail, we're expecting construction to begin this fiscal year, likely in the spring. So as a reminder, with the TAP grant and the DNR Trust Fund grant, that's one point six million dollars towards the construction of that project. And then the other grant piece is the Eagle TMF grant and that was for the lead service line inventory that you recently approved and we're getting to work on as well. This budget does propose using some of that, that fund balance this year. You know, right now we're budgeted at four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And it's really largely not because of operational pressures, but really to really take care of some, some capital needs that, that we, that your boards and committees and you as a council have identified as priorities. And we'll kind of get into those areas, but go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So with that, if that fund balance transfer is approved, that will come out of the fund balance, right? Correct, that will reduce that fund balance amount.
You would, you would budget for that purpose? Now throughout the year, you know, we'll see what revenues do, we'll see the expenses do. You know, last year for, you know, I mean, you've had prior years where you've planned on some fund balance transfer as well and then ended up not needing it at the end of the year as well. So that's, yep.
Thank you.
But you would be budgeting and planning and saying that we would be willing to at least, yep.
Okay, thank you.
So other piece on the, the revenue front, Old Beach fees. So right now the proposed budget kind of is anticipating revenue similar to what it has been for past years. But I wanted to kind of give Mr. Herbert an opportunity. This was something that we were hoping to have at your last workshop meeting and we shared a little bit of additional information for you to consider on this recently via, via email. But I wanted to give Mr. Herbert an opportunity to kind of talk about his Old Beach recommendations on fees this year. This relates directly to a goal that you as a city council set in December and looking at increasing Old Beach fees for this year.
Yeah, thanks Ryan. You know, I spearhead quite a few projects around the city. And so when you, when you asked me for a recommendation on, on setting fee structures, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you one. So we've got a lot of, lot of needs out there. And so, you know, from strategic planning, it was discussed that council may have an interest in discussing this again. So we collected some information about, just to see where we stack up in comparison to other communities. And, you know, and then just kind of providing a little bit of historical information too about what our fee structure has looked like and things that just jump right off the page to me is that we haven't had really an increase in the daily passes or season passes since, daily passes since two thousand and seventeen, season passes since two thousand and fifteen. That's pre-pandemic levels, pre-inflation levels. It's probably time for an adjustment of some sort. So. So there's a little bit of the history. We, you know, some options for council to discuss and consider and hash out or, you know, you could do no price increase at all. Keep it the same if you'd like to. You could, you know, we put a recommendation together, which for the daily passes, we thought fifteen dollars for a daily pass. That's, it's a big jump, you know, from ten to fifteen, but given the times and the demands that the community has, we feel like, like that's in comparison to other communities as well, that, that seems like a fair price. And so keeping somewhat of the same equation, so like previous years, it was like ten dollars for a daily pass, fifty dollars for a season pass. You know, keeping that same formula, that's why we set the price for seventy-five dollars for season passes. And then where it gets a little more interesting is where you get the taxpayer season pass. You know, the city does have a policy on that, which is basically to charge fifty percent of the, the season pass for the, a one-time taxpayer fee pass. And so to get that in compliance, then we would set the, the rate at thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents for that. Or you could keep it the same at a flat rate of twenty, but that would, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. So does that mean we have not been with the policy since the season pass went to fifteen, we kept it at twenty? So we've been out of compliance with the policy? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, yeah. And Scott, and we, we have the, you know, our, our thought is depending on the conversation today is something that, because the season's coming, we might bring to you on, on Monday to have some further discussion or potentially a vote. But we'll provide to you that copy of that policy to you, so you can see that, yep, that, that's what that says. But certainly it's your policy, you can change it and you can do something different than that.
I understand.
You should be following it.
Yeah. We'll find out, but okay. Thank you. I just was looking at it and like, and I'm, and I'm a math whiz and I was like, wow, twenty divided by fifty is definitely, okay. Thank you.
I couldn't get over, I, I'm like, we haven't changed it and I'm looking at two thousand and seventeen, it's been seven years. So I think it is time for an increase.
Thank you.
Yeah, fifteen makes a lot of sense to me for the daily pass, you know, just from like a logistics standpoint, you know, dealing with change. Yeah, and 15 makes a lot of sense to me for the daily pass, you know, just from like a logistics standpoint, you know, with dealing with change and, and at the beach and everything, and there's, uh. It, it just seems consistent and fair, but that's obviously negotiable.
Yeah, and it's a parking pass. It's if you walk their bikes there, it's free.
Inner urban's a dollar. I'd like to remind everybody about the inner urban.
Go ahead, Scott.
Now we need to devote all of the revenues from Oval Beach back into Oval Beach or our parks in general. Is that correct? Um, the, the, the re- the revenue stream, uh, because I, I, I think council made us aware of the issue that litigation that South Haven went through recently. And I know they've been dealing with that issue.
Right. So unless the, I mean, essentially, um, it, it gets into an evaluation of others and it's a proprietary function or, um. Oh, whether we're getting to a proprietary function that, and whether we're taking those dollars and then solely dedicating them. Uh, them to the purpose for which they were gathered. And so, uh, the Oval Beach fees, right now the, the, the revenues exceed expenses they have for years. And so we, you, you've used those other dollars for your parks. By already using them for your parks, um, you're really kind of, you know, unless it's maybe a park that's directly related to, um. Oval Beach, you're probably outside of, um, you know, some of the concerns that, that were raised. Uh, I, you know, I've, I've had some further discussion with, with legal counsel and some, some things that I was just reviewing today that I, I need to follow up with the treasurer on and other expenses that we might be able to apply. Towards Oval Beach that aren't captured there, such as administrative costs and some of our policing costs and, um, you know, certainly we've had, you know, legal costs related to, to AT&T and trying to provide, you know, coverage. You know, cellular coverage at the beach. So.
I can offer too. I think that there's a strong argument to me. I mean, Mount Bald Head is tied to Oval Beach. That is.
And so is Park Street.
Well, indeed, indeed.
So I mean, I think that we could easily spend all of that on all the, you know, repairs and maintenance that we need to do it.
No, agreed. And, you know, it's not for everybody, but you know, by improving the steps and the deck, I mean, it, it actually improves people that are so inclined physically. Uh, their ability to access the beach without having to pay a park.
And our ability to keep it safe, you know, and open.
Indeed. I just, I think we all know this is going to generate a significant reaction and discussion in the tri-community area, particularly in Sagata. So I just want to make sure that we are mindful of what some of our neighboring communities have dealt with regarding this. I mean, there continues to be a push. For beaches to have lifeguards, uh, which is very complicated, very expensive, and there's a raft of legal issues associated with that. So I just want to make sure we're being mindful, uh, but it sounds like what you've just described is we are already, you know. Using these funds for more than just simply the beach, beach operation. So it's, right, that's already happening. Okay.
Scott, what are, um, what are the daily pass fees or comparable parking in other nearby beach communities?
Well, i- it's a pretty wide range. So I, I, at one point I, I did have a chart, um, that was in the packet, but, um. But it's, it's, everyone does it a little bit differently, you know, some of it gets a little complicated and apparent, and I guess we've done things differently historically too. Like we've had a daily pass fee and then we've had like, you know, like a, a week fee, uh, you know, and it, it just kind of gets a little complicated, uh, for everybody. And then you get people upset like, what? A week ago it was this price, uh, so on and so forth, but it truly varies across the board. But really what's important to remember is what sets Oval Beach apart.
Right.
Uh, and that's the, the, the amenities that are available there, um, the level of maintenance that's required at that park. This is not just like a state park where it's kind of left natural. This is highly groomed. We offer a lot of services, you know, the sa- the public safety factor. Uh, there's a lot of things that happen behind the scenes that really, uh, you know, promote a, a nice fun day for everybody. And, and we take care of a lot of stuff that people just don't have to think about behind the scenes. So, uh, when you, when you really take a look at the service level for what, you know, for what they're getting. Uh, it's, it's hard to compare Oval Beach to a lot of other communities.
If, if I may, yeah. Um, the other thing to keep in mind is, and I know we've, we've said this a lot, but it is a parking pass. It's not a beach pass. I mean, you pay for the privilege to park there. You can get there many different ways. You can get, pack a family, a tent into a van and take them all to Oval Beach. And that's a parking pass. You can take the inner urban, you can ride your bike, you can walk. There's many other ways to do it. Oval Beach is filled up. I mean, I live on that side of the river. They're filled up by 11 o'clock on a nice day. So I mean, to me, even just from a supply and demand kind of perspective or whatever, it's really time and everything else. You can't go anywhere without things having gone up so much, and we haven't raised our prices in eight years now. It's just really time.
To, to build on Helen's point, would there be enough of an increase in. Potential anticipated revenues to do exactly what Helen described in terms of make it easier and more sustainable for people to access that beach? And I'm thinking, I'm thinking in a, and I'm, I'm thinking, you know, some more, more of a formalized, you know, it would have to be some, something agreed, something. Yeah, something agreed with an urban to, you know.
And I believe we are planning on having this discussion at the next workshop. Is that, um, or is it going to be at the next city council meeting?
Well, as I said, it's kind of up to you. Uh, so I wanted to see how this conversation went today or how receptive the council was. Um, you know, the season's coming quick and we have folks asking about the season passes already. So a couple of different options would be either these. You, typically we start selling them apparently around, uh, May 1st. So if we, you know, don't make a decision Monday, then we'd be, you know, past that date. So we could sell them at the normal rate. And then at any point that you, you know, raise it, then, then it's raised at that point, or we could choose to make a decision before then.
So we could make a decision by Monday.
Yeah, it's up to you.
Oh, yeah, just real quick. I just, I, I absolutely agree. I'd like to see that funding go to make that beach better accessible. Um, it's time for the stairs, an update on the stairs and that deck, uh, that deck is pretty old. Um, but also that, you know, I don't know, you know, what kind of funding or, you know, we're maybe years down the road. They've got that path now made out on that side, you know, where you can walk up on that path, you know, could that be improved in the future, maybe?
The wall, the wall trail?
Yeah. Could that trail be better accessible? Could it be something, I don't know, paved or, or better, you know?
It's pretty technical in some spots, to be honest. Um, but I, I just, I'm very intrigued by, you know, how it solves a number of problems. It reduces congestion on Park Street. Uh, it reduces frankly, not only resident, but visitors frustration when, when there are lines and cars are backed up. And, you know, I mean, it would be wonderful if there was kind of a reliable shuttle that was just coming, you know, up and down the hill. You know, maybe stopping somewhere downtown, maybe stopping at the chain ferry drop-off point to, to really help get people there that, you know. Don't need to bring a vehicle with a giant cooler and a bunch of other, they don't necessarily want to take with them anyway.
Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Stan. Um, yeah, I'm still thinking through the price increase itself. However, I think it's important, whatever decision the council makes. Is that if it's an increase to 15 or 11 or 12, whatever, is that there'd be very clear information given to the staff at the beach who are going to be dealing with it at the ticket booth. $15, where's the $15 going? They should have something they can give to them or they can explain very clearly.
Yeah.
It is being targeted for improvements at Oval Beach. And here are the things that we're looking to improve with this additional funding. That is critically important. That's something I think the city has not done a really good job on when it increases fees. Did a pretty good job with the short-term rentals. That's a little bit more clear in terms of where that's going to support additional management of the short-term rentals. But it's these kind of fees where, and I experienced it when we increased the parking lot fees from five to $10. The people coming in from Chicago, Detroit, whatever, they're like, yeah, whatever, $10. But the citizens that live here, they're like, $10, man, what do you, was highway robbery is some of the words I use. And there we tell them this is for supporting school programs, daughter soccer, whatever the case is, but this is different. And this needs to be very well communicated. And I think we need to get some preparation time to the community to be ready to adjust to it. So I, I think that we have an opportunity here to really communicate better on this.
And then the back of the ticket, we used to, I remember they would offer it to Sadaba, uh, or sometimes they would, you know, sell that space to make money for, to pay for the printing of the tickets. But I remember several years they'd offer to inner urban or Sadaba. Do we still have information on the back of that ticket like that? Are we still doing that? And if not, that would be great landscape to talk about what you've just paid for and what we're doing, you know, to improve the parks and that, you know.
Scott, do we still use tickets?
I'm told no. Uh, oh, no, we do use the ticket, just no information on the back.
Right, but there used to be, but remember, remember, Peter?
Sell ads.
Right.
And then, if you, 10 years ago, we had to add different businesses, we paid 300 bucks to have an ad, there were 45,000 tickets.
Right.
And then people, it just fell off. They did it for two, three years and then it was less and less people. Then the last one we did was one year.
Yeah, because you were offering us a spot when I was with Saba. Yeah.
Park Saba, yeah. Chain, not the chamber, we had one on there, we had one for Starr.
Right.
Um, there were different businesses. Then we opened up to Doug's and it fell off. And then last year we did have a Q article for the CDB, I asked Lisa and she says, no. She, she, she gave back, she hardly had any hits on that with that Q article. They can tell them, sure, her phone and stamp it.
So it's probably a waste of, or you're thinking.
I asked her the other, I think it was the last meeting, she was outside and I said, no, we haven't had the tickets printed yet, but we need to get, it takes about three weeks to get them done. But last year took a big deal to get this Q article made and she.
I thought the sign that was in front of the playground was really nicely done. So maybe just one nice sign by the ticket booth that explains where your dollars go would be lovely.
Yeah, it makes a lot of sense, even from a traffic flow standpoint. I, I know a lot of people that have worked the ticket booth. My wife was one of them and told me stories about, you know. People were so mad about it even when she worked there and it was $6. And so no matter what the price is, people are just going to complain, um, you know.
And maybe at least having enough cash ahead of time, you know, like a sign a little bit further up that, you know, it's $15. I, I think you have it at. Is it, um, at the halfway point where you can turn around?
Where you turn around, we put an ATM, we put an ATM there.
Yeah, no, I mean, like having enough mon- you know, at least so they know to have enough money, um, coming to the beach.
Just, Peter, I'm sorry, I, I should have kept you up there, but, um, you know, I've, we've heard from Scott, what's your reaction, thoughts, potential consequences? What do you think about that?
An increase.
The resident, the residential ones at 20 just changed the policy. $75 in this season pass and then some kind of incremental math, because like somebody brought up, it's a big jump from 10, it's 50% increase and do some kind of maybe. So we don't have to come back to this every year, go 12, 13, 15 over, I don't know. I mean, that's just one of my, because I think Russ kind of, you know. We had young kids at that ticket booth and we have some kind of explanation of why, you know, you know, some people know how the public become out there outside. It's only 10 last year, now it's 15. I mean, I don't know, but the $75 in that, the residential ones, the taxpayers, you know, if you look at your average bills, over $500 that. Everybody is an owner here pays in that operating fund. That's how much comes out of our operating charter tax that goes towards these parks. The last time we went and punched the numbers, it's like $500 are the typical home property owner, residential homes is paying for all these parks that remain.
Yep.
So, and that was one, you know, that's, you know, you're already, they're already paying the residential. So I think, you know, that's just a policy.
I like that.
And we haven't done it since, you know, that probably felt, we went a lot of years, 20 bucks, you know, to $40. And I think it's one of those things. Or man, it, it just something, you know, as a policy, nobody ever, ever looked at again until we pulled it out and found it and just, you know, so we should have been charging $25 here a couple of years ago.
Oh, exactly.
May I?
And then residential.
Yeah.
Taxpayer property owner passes, since we did that when we acquired all the, the short stock to cover, it's been 400 pa- it's maybe from 390 to 410. That, you know, it's just the same people come and pay the, the fee for.
Helen, go ahead. So I, I, I near and dear to this, as obviously as that you're the PPW and I pay a lot of attention to this. Um. I agree with Peter on the taxpayer season pass, and I'm going to tell you why. Because right now we get nothing from the public, from anything of, the only thing that comes from the public to pay for any of our parks, forget about our parks. Any of our infrastructure, any of that is only coming from the Oval Beach parking pass. The taxpayers have been bearing the burden for all of our tourists and our visitors, and we're happy to welcome them and all of that. But the taxpayers pay all of that right now. I think it would be a really nice benefit to leave the taxpayer season pass at 20, 75 for the season pass. But I would say I still advocate going straight to the 15. I don't like this small cuts. We, we, we are deficient and then it's taken us so long to get to this place. I know people want to say, oh, it's 50% increase and it, and it certainly is, but that's since 2015.
Yeah.
You know, so it's just, it's really time to do this. We have to catch up. We are deficient in so many areas, our infrastructure and in these things. And, and maybe we're going to get some relief with some of these, um, bills that are currently through. I went and I, um, gave testimony today for a bill that does, that we, we're hoping is going to pass. That's going to give us some relief for, um, some short-term rental, um, excess taxes, but we don't have that right now. And the taxpayers have been being, bearing the brunt of all of it, all the time. I would advocate for $20 for the taxpayers, 75 for season and $15 for the daily pass.
And I, I would echo that. I, I agree, $20. Um, believe it or not, we don't live in the land of the rich here. Um, we have a lot of folks that live here that, uh, from $20 to, what was it? 3250 or 3750? It's a big jump. We have folks that work in our stores and, and live in, and live in our apartments and, and, uh, work here every day. They're part of the character of our area. And that Oval Beach, uh, pass that they get, that's a, that's, that means a lot to them. So.
And so, some of us buy multiple taxpayer season passes since our kids are always stealing our cars and leaving us stranded. So, yeah.
Do we give employees the, um, taxpayer rates for employees once he can passes?
Hasn't there been in the past where we've given out some of them to employees?
That policy back, it says there would be no passes, no more free passes to anybody, you know, that's I.
Okay.
But could we give employees a break?
The price?
Yeah, like.
Taxpayer break?
There is, right, there, there was an interest. There was a bit of that going on last year that was unpopular with some people. We offered some different responders and they respectfully declined, uh, the free passes. So it was.
I'm not saying.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, just so you have the backstory, because you, you weren't here for it. Um, but I guess I, I would turn over to our CEO, Ryan, a, a bit. And, um, how hard is it to fix this out-of-date policy?
I mean, that's a vote of the council. So.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, uh, I think at the point where I, I, you know, I'm okay with a 15, you know, inflation is what it is. It hasn't been raised in nearly 10 years. I, I, I like, you know, there should be some perks for being a resident here, you know, and paying a lot of taxes, you know, and this is kind of everybody. You know, I think that, I think that's fair. And, um, so yeah, I could go with a change of the policy, 15. 20 and.
75.
75.
Yeah, keeping it at 20 would probably stop an explosion on Facebook too.
To be clear, I do never want to set policy by Facebook. I want to be.
I guess my only thing, anyone's got, I don't want, I don't want micromanage or nickel, like nickel and dime this. I mean, is it easier to hit a? No, it's not. Never mind. Dump question, because they have to come in to get the pass for the season. So it doesn't matter what check, card, cash, whatever. Never mind.
Okay.
I think we'll, we'll, based on the feedback, you know, tee this up for Monday. If you're ready for a vote Monday, great. You want more time to discuss it at this point, you can, you can make a choice to, to postpone it to a future meeting.
So what's our drop dead date for to make a decision on this? So it can be ready for the season with printed passes and, well, well, the passes don't have the price on them, right? So that would stop that process.
Right, but folk are already asking, like, you know, calling, Peter has indicated, so.
Yeah.
May 1st? Yeah, okay.
Season starts May 1st, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're charging May 1st?
Yeah, we start, that's generally when you start selling them.
Yeah.
We have to decide on their next meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
There's two things why we held off, because stickers now on the outside of the car and the vendor that we purchase them same place, city of South Haven gets theirs. They want 45 degrees above temperatures, just make sure to hear the person. So we had people here in May, I said, they're not available because they won't.
They won't stick?
They'll stick and they fall off.
And we don't want that.
Above 45 degrees. And that's what's just been made first for the last four years.
Okay. Thank you so much, you guys. Thank you.
All right. Continuing on, so, uh, next several slides, we'll kind of touch on general fund appropriation highlights. Um, so I think this budget, uh, you know, investing in your staff, uh, you know, we've, we've, uh, uh, set the salary and wage, the budgeted salary and wage amounts that. In a, at a level where, uh, it would allow for us to, to do some, uh, cost of living adjustments, but also allow for some merit increases as well. So last year, if you recall, uh, the, the city council was very supportive of a, a very large cost of living adjustment, considering how high inflation had been over the previous years. There was a 10% bump, uh, in employee pay last year. Um, we did cost of living adjustments, but not merit last year. Um, this year we're looking to do a kind of a combination, uh, approach of something that I've kind of heard from our, her staff that they're, they're interested in.
Yeah, I believe our current budget has a line item for a wage study through MML. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah.
I know we're not here to talk about stats of those projects, but interested to hear where we are on that once it gets an appropriate point to discuss that, because that's something we absolutely need to do before we can do this.
Yeah, I'd be happy to fill you in right now. And so Peter and I have been having these discussions over the last several weeks. Um, so MML doesn't do the actual wage studies anymore.
But it's subcontractor.
Um, but the person that helped them with them before is still in, in business. And so Peter's been in conversations with them and we, we do have a, a quote that's, that's under what we had budgeted. Uh, although it would look at just, uh, salaries, not necessarily, uh, the benefits side of things. And so we've kind of had some discussions back and forth to make sure that we're getting, uh, you know. Something that's comprehensive, um, you know, as we take a look at that. So, uh, you know, soon we, we hope to roll that out. It would involve actually, you know, interviewing and talking with staff about their, their different job duties, um, you're working in a small community, you're going to wear multiple hats. It's, um, so, um, they'll, they'll be looking at the job descriptions, doing a, a deep dive into those as they make recommendations.
Nice, nice. What's, do you have a timeline on when they ask, the ETC is, is on it?
Yeah, I, I would have hoped, uh, you know, a week or two ago, we would have gotten them started, but, uh. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, uh, Peter and I actually just today had more discussion about it. We didn't get a chance to, to, to wrap that up. But, you know, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to pull the trigger on. But you know, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to to pull the trigger on that and and get them started. And uh, certainly before the fiscal year starts, we'll have some answers back.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. Um, we budgeted for, and this is again, very discretionary item. I I know we've kind of tried to encourage the council to uh, uh, and Mr. Gardner's, you know, recommended this multiple times. Hey, like, let's try to reduce paper and bring uh, you know, uh, electronic devices. Um, so uh, I I know some folks uh, may prefer like a tablet or something like that instead of like a full-fledged laptop. Um, if you want to budget some funds for um, um, tablets to avoid paper costs, if that's an easier thing to do that, but.
Help us bring our own devices, is there a problem?
I've got two laptops, two phones, and if I get another piece of tech.
I do not want, yeah, I totally.
No, I'm good.
No.
Thank you, very, very, very excited to be to offer.
Jamie, do you feel that some of the other boards would benefit from them? Or do you feel like everybody has their own and and can just bring their own?
Well, right now, right now, we're printing all the packets for planning commission, HDC.
Okay.
Um, ZBA, um, so it might, and the reason why we print those is because of the plans, they're in color. Um, so I think they would benefit from having a tablet, not having to print that. What are we, ten cents a paper for?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, you might as a paper and then the, yeah, it's.
I mean, they're expensive.
You would say you're spending more than five dollars in a year.
In printing, so why not?
Okay, and staff time.
Well, that makes sense then.
So I, so tablets that would live here, that all boards and committees, so not one that you would be issued personally that you would take with you, but ones that would live here for every meeting.
And they would like probably have the hard case or whatever, or yeah, or yes, they would be up.
I just, I just wonder because there are probably other members that might not have, you know.
Right, yeah. But it would be more cost effective than all the printing that we do.
No.
When you're looking at these two hundred page packets we've been having for all boards and committees, it's, it's very expensive.
I understand. When it said tablets for council, I just looked at us and said, but no, if 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 that's, you know, if it's a tablet for this seat.
It is.
You know, it stays, it's plugged in. Kind of staff deal with loading, updating software.
I think, yeah, I think before we do that, we should uh, go back to what we've been talking about for quite a while now, and that's updating our audio system. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I know, I know that.
Yeah.
And I know you've been busy.
Russ, go ahead.
Yeah.
I can tell from the emails, you've been very busy.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm super pleased by this. I made this suggestion to pass city leadership manager, didn't go anywhere, passed city leadership, didn't go anywhere. Thank you for making this happen. This is exactly where we should be going. So I'm hundred percent supportive of this, even if it goes in excess of five thousand dollars. It's going to save our staff time, it's going to look progressive for the community and and it's just, it's a goal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, we have a a contrib, you know, budgeting for that, that contribution that you discussed uh, for for fireworks uh, this year. Um, elections, uh, you know, as your city clerk will will tell you, and I think you already know, some of you actually worked the last uh, election as far as early voting goes, you know, we we have multiple early voting uh, elections this year, so we're going to have August and November uh, that we're, we have some costs for. Uh, and then there's an additional piece of equipment that that Jamie's recommending as well, uh, to kind of round that out, so.
I I'm going to jump back to tablets. Can we rename that so it's not tablets for council? As people look at this.
Yeah.
I shudder to think of, oh, they're buying tablets for themselves.
Right.
Tablets for city hall.
There you go.
Right.
I mean, it's part and parcel with the audio, basically. It should, you know, just to make, yeah.
That's a good point.
We all looked at it and thought, ooh, we don't.
Right, that's what I.
Nope.
Fancy new ones, yeah.
Great.
Fair enough. Uh, and then something that uh, we're asking you to budget for is is uh, file scanning. So uh, we've been approached by a, a, you know, some folks that, you know, do this kind of work and and uh, my understanding is that Douglas and the township have already done this, but uh, we have a lot of old files in the basement. I hate spiders, so I hate going down and digging through them. It is like a battle and they're, yeah, and they're dusty and uh, and I hear all kinds of boxes I'm digging through. So we we're actually really lucky. We have, I think, good organized old files for the most part. Uh, but um, you know, we've kind of gotten some quotes. We think we can do the files in the basement at a a pretty reasonable price where they would scan them in. And also to the extent that um, things uh, that they're legible and and we can read them, they can actually convert them into searchable PDF documents as well, and hopefully make it easier to search through historical documents, so.
So I just, so that'll be subbed out to a company that does this and they bring their own scanners and do it. Yeah, we, yeah, we do that in my, in my, my company as well. It's just, it's.
And I want to say that, like, as someone who uses these documents, I mean, I've been trying to do some stuff to to look at like the conservation um, easements that we've got in certain properties for PPW. I mean, this stuff is like nowhere and I know it exists, but again, I don't like spiders and I'm even crisper than like, I think, maybe not Jamie, but definitely more than Ryan. Yeah, but like uh, this stuff, I know that these, I know that this stuff exists and it's just, it's just, you know, just like uh, deferred maintenance on bookkeeping is the way I would describe it. And it needs to be done. And it seems to me like that that's a lot less than me going to the city clerk and paying, you know, whatever I'd have to pay for a page to get some of these stuff that that I really need to look at. So absolutely, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think just along with like pr- printing the packets, this is going to be a huge efficiency improvement for for staff and cost. Ultimately will save us money in terms of staff time, so.
Also with our FOIA requests.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly.
FOIA requests is time.
Yep.
And so me digging in the basement for like something from nineteen eighty-six, takes a long time, right? Or just trying to find a document if I didn't know what, so it'll save FOIA costs too.
That's great.
I'm surprised we haven't done this yet.
Here we are.
It's all right.
New sheriff in town, darling, new sheriff in town.
Maybe just enjoys going to the basement.
So credit prior administrations, I will say that our our share drive here, though, I think is is some really good information on there. And historical documents have been saved on there and they're searchable and and uh, I mean, it's, it's been a, seen a lot worse, so. Uh, so I will say that it's just kind of getting, getting, you know, probably two thousand and eight, maybe prior is when we're we're really struggling for historical documents, so.
Thank you.
All right, so next slide, um, certainly I I know it's a topic that 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 you had raised as a council last year, it was in July. Uh, you had asked for kind of a a little bit of a presentation and and had a discussion about about legal fees and and kind of a breakdown of of how those, all those dollars are spent. So the budget that's before you uh, essentially reduces uh, legal fees by a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars um, from current year budget, which um, I say that to also say that your current, your budget that you're in right now is is not use all of your budgeted amounts uh, for for last year. So, I mean, essentially what was budgeted for last year with the the largest line item was was kind of city council legal and and that related um, largely be, was set at a large amount um, because of your your litigation with Dune Ridge, frankly. I mean, that that's, that's been a a huge chunk of it. So, you know, I've I've talked with uh, Chris Patterson about kind of what are, what's expected on the Dune Ridge litigation front. Um, I mean, you do need a budget for it. I mean, you are in litigation, uh, you, uh, so we need to make sure that we're we're budgeting for dollars and expected or potential expenses that you may have as we're going to the court of appeals and and depending on if things get kicked back, or we need to end up at a at a trial or, you know, and that sort of thing, so. Um, so those dollars are are there. Uh, reduce the the city manager and planning and zoning uh, will be budgets as well. Uh, a lot of it's been reduced by, I I talked with our attorneys about um, really moving towards um, more Zoom attendance at meetings to to help with some costs uh, to save on 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 the costs that they have in in driving here. Um, I hope that's beneficial to them as well because that's a lot of their time that they're spending and coming out here on a regular basis and I I want to respectful of that as well. Um, so uh, planning on your attorney is still being here for your regular meetings in person. I mean, those are meetings that you take action and are, you know, um, make a lot of important decisions. Uh, um, other than that, um, they essentially will be on Zoom unless it's kind of a uh, a significant meeting where we're expecting a lot of issues that that we're really going to need your attorneys in an in-person presence, so. On Zoom, still very available to you, still there to, you know, ask questions, still there to speak up if they see a concern or something that they need to to step uh, in on.
That that was going to be my question. So via Zoom, unlike members of council, um, legal counsel could participate.
Absolutely.
A hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
In the meetings, you know, not only listening, but also uh, piping, piping up and
Answering.
Answering questions or offering opinions.
Yep.
As just as like a regular participant.
Jake did that um, during the short, for a lot of the short-term rental and it it worked really well. And he would jump in if we were misspeaking um, and answer questions. Um, how much, what percentage of our legal budget is for litigation? Do we have that number roughly?
Yeah, so I think when when Jake looked at it last July from the the notes I was reading, I think it was about two-thirds was kind of the the breakdown um, roughly. Um, that's that's kind of how it broke down. Um, so I mean, one piece to keep in mind, so on the planning and zoning front, um, we do have some legal costs built into um, the permit as far as like, like planning commission meetings or ZBA meetings, like, so so we do have that that built that we didn't have, like, should they drive time built in, but we have like, okay, if this case takes, you know, this long, that's that's built in. Um, if there's particular legal reviews that are needed for a planning or zoning case, uh, we can take that out of somebody's escrow deposit that they're they're filing. So there are some some cost offsets there. And then certainly through your short-term rentals, you're doing some cost recovery on some of the fees they have related to writing ordinances. Um, just it's from perspective, other uses of legal, um, you know, your your code requires that they review, you know, your agreements. Um, so they're reviewing those, you know, as we have different ordinance updates like we did with uh, hardscaping. Um, you know, they're, they're doing legal search research and then kind of drafting tho- those ordinances. We know that there's various legal issues that arise uh, throughout the year on on various matters, and so they're assisting with those. Um, you know, they'd spend a lot of time on your AT&T uh, project this upcoming year from a budget perspective, you know, the water sewer agreements are are, in fact, we're supposed to have a draft of the water agreement back um, any day now. Um, I understand that it's wrapped in uh, in the Cal Lake side. So um, that's going to take some some time amongst all of the communities and 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 legal time on that. Um, certainly they support your enforcement efforts. Uh, then like I said, attendance at meetings and, you know, so.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Uh, and I had called Mr. Cummins a couple of weeks ago and a couple of things, and this is one of them that came up. And um, I'm really pleased by the direction we're moving in this as you you kind of, the way that I always look at is what can we control and what can't we control? And, you know, you and I talked about this and you said, Russ and Marty are going to be making some efforts to start to look at the controllable costs, which is exactly what we're seeing here. So again, thank you for doing this. This is something that I think the council really should be focused on because it is a major cost for the city. Presumably some of these costs will go down as the Dune Ridge plays itself out. I mean, I think we've passed the heavy period, but we just don't know what's coming. And so you do your best to plan for what you think might be hitting books, but again, thank you. This is another direction that I'm very happy that we're moving in. Thank you.
Now, also repeat that. I just said, you know I'm happy uh, that about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, that's that's substantial. And um, and uh, I I like that. Thank you. You've done a great job here, Ryan.
Thank you.
And this is not out of disrespect for the attorneys either. It's just a matter of us having to be responsible for what we say, so.
They worked very hard over the last week, I'll say that, so.
Yeah.
So on the planning and zoning, um, few different points here. So uh, you know, Granite has contracted code enforcement and fire department conducting inspections for your short-term rentals. I mean, those are all things that that you had discussed recently and and approved as part of the short-term rental enforcement plan. So those 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 costs are are budgeted here. Uh, and as I know, we do have a a revenue source i- as well. So even, you know, we have the expense side that we have to account for and appropriate, but we also have a revenue side there as well.
I say one thing about that.
Yep.
It's important, I think, even just for the public to know that we can't charge any more for fees than we are spending. And and so actually, we're still under because we don't want to violate that. So when we talk about revenue, the city does not make money off of short-term rentals. Actually, the opposite is still true. The ta, the the residents are still bearing a burden for that, and that's because legally we can't do that otherwise, then it's a tax. And so I think it's really important that people understand that we can talk about revenues and that's fine. We're just saying to my mind, less expenses for the taxpayer. I wouldn't even call it a, but that, I understand that the the one side, and I'm an accountant, I get all that, but um, to, we're not making any money off this, we're still losing money on it, but we're doing it by design because we can't make money because of laws are structured in that way. I just, it's important to me to get that out every time because it, because again, misinformation, policy by Facebook, all the things that we see and it's, yeah, it's hard to watch, but that's the deal. So please, continue, sorry.
A quick follow-on on on that, Helen and I were at the short-term rental hearing today in Lansing. And and one cost that we we can't really track for, it's tourism in general, but that has been, you know, certainly exacerbated with this abundance of short-term rentals is wear and tear on the streets, you know, the pipes and sewers. I mean, you know, a normal house has two point five people living in it. It goes to ten, you know, with short-term rentals. And so that's more, you know, sewer and water and all of that. So it's just for us as we're looking at our budget and at short-term rentals, thinking of the other costs that we can't really quantify um, there.
Yeah, I would just, uh, I would counter that a little bit. I don't see short-term rentals as being that much of an aggregator of expenses in town. This has been a discussion I had on council when I was back in the late nineties. We actually met with Senator Patty Burkholtz at the time to talk about how the city could get more Act fifty-one funds because of that increase in the number of people, and this is well before short-term rentals became an issue, so. Fine if you want to put it in that short-term rental context, but it's been an issue for this community for a long, long time with the just influx of tourists. And, you know, I'm I'm all for finding ways in order to get more money to make sure we can keep pace with this. Uh, but but I just want to put in context, it's it's been an issue that's been going on for a while.
Okay.
Uh, next item here and 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 it was put in the planning and zoning bucket, so don't think of this as like, necessarily that it's necessarily within the planning and zoning bucket, so. Um, but we, last year there was a placeholder in your budget, uh, was kind of labeled as an office manager position. It was, it was budgeted for this fiscal year. And, you know, we're in April right now and and we we haven't filled it. Uh, I know that the previous city manager was was working on that uh, in in more so in January and and then obviously there's been a transition, so. Uh, you know, I'm asking the council to 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 budget, uh, continue to budget for this into next fiscal year. Um, you know, title, details, salary benefits, none of that's decided. This is, this is a placeholder. I did change the title from office manager to like project coordinator, executive assistant, which might be a little bit more in line with um, uh, the city village of Douglas as a almost an exact position like this. Um, that that does this, you know, uh, handles, helps with project coordination, um, and assisting, um, you know, various staff with various functions, which is what was kind of intended with the position that uh, was discussed last year. I think grant writing was also something that was um, discussed. Um, so ultimately a council decision, uh, you know, want to, you know, fund something like that, that's fine. Certainly if you budget for it, it doesn't mean, it's like this year that you're necess, that we're necessarily going to fill it. We would have a very robust discussion about this at a separate meeting before we actually pulled the trigger on it, so.
Okay.
And then zoning or or master plan updates, uh, placeholder number, I mean, your your planning commissions continuing to take a look at uh, uh, potential caps and 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 residential zones. Um, so there's, you know, there's some dollars related to that 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 continued, um, you know, taking a look at that and the planning commissions kind of um, discusses a goal, either, you know, some zoning or master plan related updates, uh, so it kind of sets some consulting-related dollars aside for that that particular purpose. And we do utilize our consulting planner, too, for uh, more complex plans and and that sort of thing. Again, we recover, well, you know, those costs through our fees. Um, general fund projects. Um, so this kind of gets into, you know, I talked about maybe some potential fund balance transfer, and this is kind of where some of that's going to come into play. So again, we had the revenue side where we have grant dollars coming in. Uh, so on the appropriation side, we, again, we're planning on Blue Star Trail construction happening in this fiscal year. Most of that's covered by by uh, your your grant costs. Um, certainly we're we're dealing with the the cost related to design uh, as well right now. Um, another piece of this budget, uh, again, this is still working through kind of the Parks and Public Works Committee process. But um, uh, and we've had some discussions, uh, brief discussions in prior work sessions that um, a a traffic signal is is uh, you know, proposed for for Lake and Blue Star, that something that would not be covered by the 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 grant dollars, that wasn't part of that scope. So if the council uh, is interested in a a traffic signal at that that location, um, then that that would be cost that that would be on the city at, you know, at least two hundred thousand dollars. Um, Mount Bald Head Park, your your Parks and Public Works Committee, um, at their last meeting, recommended that the city council, um, well, let me back up. So uh, Parks, so your PPW superintendent's been working with the engineer to take a look at, you know, what the needs are there and and kind of get some cost estimates. And uh, I think you had discussed at your last strategic planning that the bathrooms really need need some work there, uh, as well as the upper deck. Uh, and and uh, so uh, Parks and Public Works Committee took a look at some of those renderings and did recommend that the council uh, consider um, uh, uh, funding those projects uh, next fiscal year. So uh, the five hundred thousand dollars would replace the bathrooms, would uh, take care of the upper deck, uh, and then some some retaining wall work up there as well, would not replace the stairs themselves.
It's important to, yeah, that that's the stairs and that the, a lot of the erosion issues that, a lot of the erosion issues that we're having, if there's anything I'm overlooking, it's, yeah. But those are, those are big expenses. The stairs are a big deal, but the upper deck has to be done first, then you work down to the stairs. But the stairs absolutely need to be done and right now.
Oh, they're not as bad as they used to be.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know, but.
I tell you, when they replace these, the ones before them, you remember, right, Lauren?
Yeah.
But the staging is do the deck first and then the stairs.
Right.
Okay, interesting. All right.
The, the regarding the erosion, the other question that's come up has been brought up to me repeatedly. Is, is there any liability? Is there anything out there that is still incumbent on the people that caused that damage that there's any? I, we're probably well past any kind of statute limit, whatever. But. Has there been any discussion in regards to research about the damage that was caused because it was caused by an improper application of pest or herbicides, if I recall correctly? Is that right? I, I'm just asking because that's been asked of me.
Yeah. So my understanding from talking with Scott and learning a little bit more about this, yeah, that, yeah, the application that they provided wasn't supposed to kill other vegetation and, and did. And. So I, I could take a look back to see if there was. Prior research on, on whether or not there's some kind of, you know, contractual related. You know, issues there. And, and I think there was some follow-up replanting of vegetation and response to that. Correct, Scott?
Yeah, there was. There were some kind of dune stabilization attempts after the damage was incurred, like, you know. Kind of making do with what existed. So if they, you know, if they killed some trees on the slope, they would. Take the trees down and kind of avoid, you know, some safety hazards that way, but also let the logs lay there to kind of create a blocker for sandy erosion. And hopefully that would kind of hold in place for some other vegetation to take root, at least stabilize it temporarily. And that I think was the DNR, wasn't it that?
That was Michigan State. There should be a report somewhere that. Michigan State defesters, wherever they, they came out here, went through everything and. They argued back and forth, you know, one, one defensor had one opinion, but it was some kind of report that was done from the. Plan conservancy that they hired in Michigan State to do what went wrong.
Right, so.
Then, you know, 10 years ago.
Right, yeah. I'm just asking because this continues to be asked of me when it comes up. And. You know, if you walk up and down those stairs, that erosion, there's actually a. Whatever you want to call it, that water's running down the side of that dune. And. By not addressing this more focused, I think we run the risk of. I mean, the building shifting, I mean, there's things shifting up top of the dune. It's a living thing. So if we want to, you know, invest money in. The infrastructure, we need to make sure that the infrastructure of the dune is also, we can't control erosion. Completely, but we need to be able to say that we're doing something to make sure that it's not getting worse. It's not a criticism. It's just if you walk up there, you see it. And I think that just needs to be put in the calculus of this.
Yeah, well, you're, you're right. And I, I can see it from driving down Lucy too. And I, I, so I'm, I'm still like learning more about, you know, some of the history. Like I said, I appreciate, you know, Scott and what he had shared with me recently. I, I received the call from somebody recently as well with, with, you know, asking about it. I know Scott's talked with John Moxie about, you know, could, you know, dune grass be a possibility? And I'm not an expert to know if, you know. Dune grass should be placed on that side of the dune and all sorts of things, but. I, I know the DNR has also, you know, told me recently that they have some dollars coming for kind of planting new, new trees. And I think we had maybe, you know, that. He's like, hey, let me know and be willing to help Saga Talk out, kind of a thing.
We've done that several times over the years, haven't we? I remember us receiving a check and there've been several organizations and Boy Scouts and that trying to plant trees.
At least, at least two tree planting.
Has it only been twice?
At least twice that I can recall.
But I, I, from what I understand, they just haven't taken both times, right? That well?
Some have, some haven't. You know, what you, you, a lot of the roots, you know, it's like the biggest challenge is the logistics, right? So you're trucking or, you know, kind of. Rucking all this equipment up the dune. And so. One of our better, better options was to plant bare root trees. And so when you're planting bare root trees in sand like that, you do expect a, a, you know, certain rate of failure. And then the deer, of course, didn't help. But there's a lot of trees that did live.
Yeah, good.
But a lot, good, that's good to know.
I heard that deer ate at a feast is what I heard.
It becomes an interesting conversation about the whole ecosystem, you know. Planting trees may also entail. Deer control. I mean, anybody that goes up and down the stairs for exercise, you're exercising with the herd. I mean, they are there every night. If you're walking the steps, they're there. And. You know. You may have to. Do something.
Yeah, and, and to that point, I sent an email to Scott and Ryan a couple of weeks ago. The DNR is actually seeking feedback from communities. On their deer experience, their current deer populate, you know, they're not looking for population study, but they want to see what your experience has been. Cause I'll tell you from my experience, I've seen deer and numbers of deer in town I've never seen in my entire life.
Yeah, same here just the last few years.
Period. And. You can pretty much tell what the reason is, is because their habitat's being reduced and there's fewer hunters and they're over breeding. I mean, that's just, it's very simple science. A lot of communities in Michigan have had to do culling and they've had to do different things. I'm not, so if anybody's listening, I'm not suggesting a call, but. It is becoming an issue. And once they start chomping on people's plantings and landscaping, it's going to become something that people want to see. Okay, what's the city doing about this? So. I would encourage you at least, maybe you can share that link and, and fill out the survey from the DNR and get the information into them. So at least they can hear from a number of people from town. I don't know where that's going to go, but they're definitely seeking information and it takes about five minutes to fill it out.
I know Douglas said that, uh, not long ago, and it'd be interesting. I, I don't see a difference. I drive over to Douglas and I'm still seeing the herds. They're still hanging out in front of.
They got that many. They didn't get that many.
Okay.
Yeah, fifteen in my yard right now.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Russ. Their habitat is being eaten up at a tremendous rate. I mean. We're seeing deer on the hill that we haven't seen in a long time because of the timbering that went on behind the Shell Station, you know, that whole, that whole forest got removed. And so they were all now down.
A little bit of history, there was a, there was a time where there were deer swimming in the river and some residents in town who are no longer here actually had guns out and they shot deer in the river.
Oh geez.
And they actually ended up getting arrested and they served some jail time. So, yeah.
There you go.
Hopefully it doesn't occur again.
Millfoil.
I thought it was millfoil.
Another species that seems to be invading.
Yeah. So, so budgeting for your, your millfoil treatments and. It sounds like there, there were some additional H, you know, trees that had the hemlock, woolly adelgid as well that weren't on the initial survey, although I haven't heard back yet. And whether or not any of those were on our property, but so kind of a, a place where they're. And City Hall. So I, I think in, in past budgets, you had had kind of a. A remodel of the interior of City Hall budgeted, kind of felt, it wasn't included in last year's budget. This year we're, we're asking for some budgeted dollars to just kind of. Start looking at the internal space, you know, are there certain walls that can be moved without, you know, the building crumbling and that, that sort of thing, just kind of doing some of that initial engineering and work that's needed to really. Discuss really what's possible and what's not possible. So our engineering firm has given us a proposal to at least. Kind of take a look at the bones and, and dig into that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. This, this is way overdue. City staff has been really struggling, not struggling, but they've, they've been working with space that looks the same as it did 25 years ago and change, needs to have changed. Well, that also include the upstairs in terms of the entire space or is it just going to be focused on the first floor?
This would be all entire building.
Great.
Kind of, yeah, that's what we're taking a look at now. Obviously we're still very early on. We'd have to take a look at what options there are. And then obviously then we get into cost. And again, we have a lot of competing priorities and. All right. So moving on out of the general fund into the, the major and local streets, just, you know. Highway, you know, kind of letting you know, what are the revenue sources there? We have our Act 51 state gas tax registrations, you know, kind of formula based from, from the state. We bring in $190,000 a year from that. There's a county road millage, county road millage dollars that we receive at the tune of $190,000. And then. Local, you have a dedicated millage on your, your tax bills for local city of Saga Tech roads that, that brings in about $288,000 a year. And we'll talk, kind of talk about somebody, some folks may say, well, man, you're bringing all those dollars in for roads. Well, you know. Sometimes when we're planning for larger projects, we need to kind of save some of those dollars towards those, those large projects. And we'll talk about that here in a moment. So as far as your, your. Again, your, your street fund balance and major streets, you're at three quarters of a million and that at two million in local streets. This past year, you use some of that fund balance for East West Tac and Taylor. And again, some folks would say, maybe you have all these dollars for, for roads. Why don't you do some roadwork? Well, the next slide we'll kind of talk about. Gearing up for a really significant project, and that's really replacement of Maple Street. So roadwork itself and then the, the water main underneath. So the proposal that I received from, from John Moxie. To really get this work started, we're but asking to budget for $100,000 in this next fiscal year. We would start that, that planning work he's indicated in 2024 into early 2025, formal design work throughout 2025 with construction starting in 2026. I've heard some folks want that maybe a little bit more aggressive. So I'll talk with them about, you know, what's, what's possible on, on that front. Maybe, you know, off. A fall 2025 kind of start date or something along those lines, if that's possible, that would fall on next fiscal. Yeah, next fiscal year. So. If for whatever reason we were able to get it like spring 2025, which was kind of the. Initial. Maybe we could do that thought that John Moxie had, then we would need some budget adjustment for these funds to fund a portion of that work, knowing that it's going to fall over at least two fiscal years. So $100,000 is going to get us started on, on that design work that, that's really needed to, to move that, that project forward. But. As you recall, probably from your capital improvement plan presentation by, by Scott. Last month, you know, water main and road restoration there, that, that's a, you know, two and a half million dollar project. So.
What's the plan for Butlershire? The timing for Butler Street? And is that, I'm assuming something we're saving for?
Well, I, I don't know that we're necessarily.
Or, I mean, I, I'm just curious about Butler Street.
Yeah. So that, that, that's on your capital improvement plan. That's another really, I mean, Scott, feel free to fill in and, and speak up. So. It's on your plan. Scott can fill me in maybe on the details on kind of years. I mean, again, that's going to be another. Have you left? I think ahead of that, actually Scott's and, and John Moxie have talked about Elizabeth Street as far as water. But once we, you know, and then we have. Some interest in obviously some work on Park Street that we'll talk about here at the end. But Butler Street is a tough nut to crack. It's going to take a lot of planning and it's going to be a, a, a big one and. A huge amount of funding.
Butler, Butler Street is kind of known as the sleeping dragon to some degree. It's one of those projects where the road, you, you can't sneak that one in. Before Memorial Day and after Labor Day. That's a, that's construction all summer long. It's going to be hugely impactful to the business community, the tourists, every, everybody. So it is in need. There's, it's one of the older, if I remember right, it's one of the older water mains that we have in the city. And, you know, we just. Did some construction work out front, trying tying in the, the store, the gutters to the catch basin out front. And if you look at these catch basins, they're, they're absolutely ancient. They're. Basically this one's probably the better one that we have because we had to reconstruct about half of it when we, when we tied in those gutters. But. To, to Ryan's point, just to kind of look at the next few years, the, the next three-year outlook or so, like what, what John and I'll be recommending. Is, you know, basically, you know, Maple Street is going to be a heavy hitter. And then after that, you know, hopefully some of the construction at the school starts dying down so we can take on Elizabeth Street. And then the year after that, we really, you know, based on a lot of the, the feedback from the community. You know, you know, the three-year outlook would be to really start taking a look at Park Street. Particularly the area like around Holiday Hill where there's some erosion issues going on. The right of way is not, the road isn't actually in the right of way. So that all has to get ironed out. A lot, a lot of expense with that. And so I would suspect. After we tackle some of those massive projects, then we can maybe start taking a look at Butler Street a little more seriously.
Yeah, thank you. And I would also challenge the city to think about Butler Street at even a higher level in terms of streetscape and include the business community. I mean, we're, we're, we're well ahead of ourselves here, but. I think Butler Street looks the same as it did back in the 50s, back in the 60s. I mean, the. Size have changed, but the basic use of the street remains the same. You know, there could be some opportunities to improve the streetscape for our businesses and well as our visitors. So I would put that out there and we'll continue to ask that.
Yeah. And along with that too, probably, you know, we'll come up with some sort of like rotation. This isn't popular, but I'll say it, you know, some sort of. Kind of rotation program for our trees, you know, a lot of, we, we catch a lot of grief about tree maintenance and. You know, there's some sizable trees along Butler Street. Everyone, everyone loves the canopy. You know, but there's a cost to it. There's a lot of projects out there. We get trip and fall incidences where we, we've tried to put. Band-aids on, on areas where concrete's getting pushed up or shifted. And. It, it, it should, it should be looked at at some point where, you know, maybe probably PPW fall, probably fall back on us, but.
This is just kind of a. This is a comment for Holly on Planning Commission. I know you guys are talking about parking. You know, if, if some of those parking solutions could be in play before the Butler project, Butler Street project, maybe that would be. Something to just keep in mind if we could, you know, have some better parking. Options before the Butler Street, you know, construction happens, that seems like that would be awesome. Yeah.
Given how ancient Butler Street, the infrastructure is, are we worried that? It might. Raise its dragon head and surprise us.
We had a close call just a few months ago.
Right.
I mean, had that been, had that been the weekend of Venetian week, I can't imagine what, what the feedback from the business community would have been because people were out of water for 24 hours in, in downtown.
Yeah. And then it's been kind of, there's been sections of it that have been kind of scabbed along a little bit, like, you know, down by Wally's, there was like a sanitary sewer connection issue. And. So the road was kind of torn up at that point. But, but to do a, you know. Those are band-aids. I mean, really to do a full rebuild, it's like, you know, there's like a. Butler Street is really odd. Like there's two different storm sewer systems on Butler Street. There's like an old abandoned one. And then there's like the one that we actually use. So there's a lot of stuff like that, a lot of thick concrete that's right underneath the surface of the road. So the expense. Is going to be huge, just because a lot of the stuff was overbuilt for its time.
And I suppose it's not practical to, to phase it, you know, over the years, like a block at a time to minimize the disruption.
Yeah, that's something I'm learning as I go, right? So like when I first got involved in this, it's like, well, how, how satisfying would it be just to start from one, you know, go coast to coast basically. And. The reality is that that, that a lot of that's driven by cost.
Right, right.
Okay.
All right. So. Local streets. It's kind of a large, you know, I didn't say large, we could always use a lot more, but there's a contractual service line item, a lot of things. Kind of hit this area, but things that would, would hit this area just kind of highlights, uh, street painting again. And then the asphalt resurfacing, Millenfield work that, that Scott and Mr. Moxie have worked on. These are the roads that they're. Planning for. And I think Monday, we're planning on bringing the. Engineering proposal forward on those particular roads to start planning for that work this year as well. The motor pool side of things. Peters indicated that cash on hand, you have about three quarters of a million dollars. Huge piece of equipment that is, is getting older and, and starting to, it's, it's maintenance costs, my understanding are, are starting to increase pretty substantially to the point where it's like, we're paying a lot in maintenance costs into a. A product that I don't know, you know, so. Wheel loader is something that I guess is needed and Scott can speak to particular needs, but you know, they're, they're not cheap either, apparently. So half a million dollars. Sounds like we might be able to get a pretty good resale cost, you know, to maybe get, you know. $75,000 to $100,000 back, but still a pretty significant chunk that still is, would be, would hit your motor pool fund. New pickup truck that I think got pushed from last year that didn't get purchased this past, this current fiscal year.
It wasn't the budget. It didn't happen because of the, the big three strike. Yeah. So they're still behind.
So this wouldn't be an additional beyond what you had already budgeted for last year. We're just kind of moving it to a, a, on the budget year. Salt spreader for the, the truck and then zero turn mower as well as requested.
The wheel loader, I refer to it as a front-end loader, right? Same thing.
Yeah, that was my question. What is a wheel loader? Okay, front-end loader. I got it. Thank you.
I, I use Peter's term. I have the equipment expert, so.
Is it a snowmobile or snowm?
Okay, yeah. Good to know. All right. Thank you.
So this next slide kind of gets into your, your water sewer fund. So we talked about Maple Street, right? And, and there's a water main that, that needs to be replaced. Well, your, your. Water sewer fund itself. Has I think three or $400,000 in fund balance. Which. Frankly, we, we, you know, probably shouldn't drain that to zero because there, there are emergent things that may come up that, that we need for, from the water sewer fund. So. As you recall, probably back in the fall, Baker Tilly was here as presenting to you a proposed water asset management plan that was required by Eagle. You approved the, the water asset management plan. And as part of that plan, they had recommended that you implement essentially an infrastructure fee that would. Be per metered equivalency units. They had a couple of different options. One was, you know, $23. Per month, per metered equivalent unit. And then that would. And then next year it would, you know, kind of go up $3 for a few years, and then it would kind of drop down to a dollar increase per year. The other option was option two was starting at $20 and then doing $3 increases for the next several years. To really pay for the, the, the water infrastructure needs that are, are needed. So. That would bring in about, you know, next year's budget, we're. So um, that would bring in about, you know, next year's budget, we're. Well, let me back up. We're planning on bringing forth this, their recommendation to you to ultimately make a a decision on. Um, Saga Township apparently has had this type of a fee for a while. Douglas uh, uh, has already implemented the 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 fee that Baker Tilly had recommended. Uh, this was recommended a bit of a lower amount at fifteen dollars uh, per month, per uh, meter equivalent unit. So um, so we're we're planning on some revenue, assuming that you approve it. If you don't approve it, obviously we'll we'll take it out of your budget. Um, uh, but no, that that really, I mean, we we we, you know, staff really feels strongly that that we needed a dedicated. Dollar source for water main replacements, your lead service line replacements. Um, and it's going to take a while just to build the fund balance that's needed for these large water main related projects, you know, like Butler Street that that you mentioned. So um, yeah, I think that's estimated to bring in about three hundred fifty thousand dollars at that twenty dollar per month uh, recommendation. Cutting out a little bit less next, it may take a little while to implement and get it going, but um, so. So know that that's going to be coming soon. It's a tough decision. I know it's not an easy decision. I know that there's a lot to consider there and it's it's not cheap. But at the same time, we want good quality water infrastructure and there's a lot of needs and uh, and costs aren't going away. And historically, by understanding from Peters that, you know, the general fund dollars have kind of been used for that purpose. Um, and and really we should have good dedicated water infrastructure dollars, you know, paying for the water systems needs.
Yeah, um, I would just encourage, if you haven't already done so, is talk with the township manager and talk with the village, city of, city of, village of Douglas City manager. About their experience with this implementation of these, because I've heard some stories from people that there were some challenges doing it and some community pushback on it. So just something that maybe we can learn from their.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I've had a little bit of talk, or I've had some talks with with Lisa and and Douglas uh, about their experience and um, but um. You know, I need to dive into a few more details about, yeah, just to roll out and how that would work too. So I appreciate, appreciate that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it absolutely needs to be done. Um, with the EPA's new proposed lead sta- standards. Inflation across the sector could go up tremendously as more and more municipalities have to scramble to replace lead service lines and and find contractors. Find raw materials. So being well funded, well in advance, I think is would be very wise for us as a city.
It's always hard to raise, but but the fact is, this is a bill we owe. And we have nothing saved up for it. So the bill has come due. We need to pay it. And so now we need to start figuring out a way to get that done. I mean, that's how I see it. It's deferred maintenance. We got to get it, we got to get after it.
I would agree. So other ideas, so this is not currently plugged into your budget. It was also kind of a a discussion at the Parks and Public Works Committee level. Um, so you know, John Moxie, it it kind of uh, provided an engineering uh, proposal. Uh, Park Street, I know there's interest in kind of to the extent that we can, putting in either, you know, wider shoulders or sidewalks or a combination of both. Very tricky and and challenging project. Um, frankly, there's not like identified funding source to even do the the. The 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 proposed construction amount, even I think the estimates from a few years ago were, I don't know, two to three million or something like that. The cost has gone up since then dramatically. Um, so essentially John's indicating that there's interest in in Park Street. And kind of moving, you know, uh, further conceptual design work along and getting uh, more into details. Uh, in anticipation of eventually doing a project there that um, that that costs uh, would be thirty four thousand dollars uh, to do it. Um, I said, I I didn't include this in in this year's budget, considering that, you know, we have a lot of other our projects and there's a lot of. Uh, it it's tough, right? Because, you know, I I hear exactly what folks are saying. We 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 were seeing additional homes being, you know, put in over there. There's increased traffic. I mean, I think I I would love to see, you know, some sort of, you know, uh, better walking paths and and that sort of thing. It's just a matter of kind of weighing out. You know, where are we at with with funding and ability to to get something done within a certain period of time? And do you want to spend those dollars now? Or is this something that that you want to uh, do in the future? So I I will defer to council. If you want this in your your budget, we'll 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 do it. Um, um. But at this point, it's not not in there.
I vote now, put it, put it in the budget. Um, it's long overdue and, you know, we're trying, I think a lot, we all agree, making this town more bike and pedestrian friendly. Is all for the good. Park Street is basically the gateway to Oval Beach to have it look more friendly for everybody. Non-motorized users as well as motorized users is all all to the good. And this is going to take time. There's going to be lots of discussion and feedback from the residents on Park Street. So sooner we sooner we get at it, the better, frankly.
Yeah, and I think if we can articulate back to them sort of what the, what we see those steps being and the timeframe. Then they, my sense is they will feel like we have heard them and we can manage expectations for that. We're, I guess, all this, you know, this year or next year, but here's sort of the roadmap that we're, I mean, assuming we get a roadmap that we envision.
We've got a lot that we do to work, to be working on, you know, all these roads and all that. And I'm like, I I I would love a sidewalk, by the way. You know, I'd love a great, easy way to walk over there. I'm just wondering realistically, you know, in the next three to five years, are we good? Even longer, will we have it in our budget to spend that, what was three million is probably going to end up being four or five million at this point? Because that was several years ago, right? And and I'm just, is it realistic that we're going to be?
So I think, I think what we owe the residents there is sort of um. A a tight um, summary of where we are, what the issues are. What our approach and the rough timeframe that we envision for being able to make meaningful progress. Because I, my sense when I talk to people is you guys just don't care. I mean, all you care about is, you know, downtown. Um, which, you know, uh, we all have our neighborhood by.
If you listen to the folks downtown, they say we don't care.
If if we could communicate more, I mean, sort of get our our high level game plan talking points down. So we can say, yep, we know, and here's sort of what we see and it is on the horizon. I don't know, maybe that's unrealistic.
If I may, we talk, we talk about this at every parks meeting, obviously, and I'm willing where it's going on there. Um, when you say, would we have the money in three to five years? I will tell you, it's going to take three to five years to get those people to agree on something. And that, not that they're, not that the residents are going to be the arbiters, but so there's a lot of very. Uh, I don't need to lecture on Park Street. Everyone knows what Park Street's all about. Um, there's encroachments on city property. There's city property, encroachments on private property. There's, you've got to worry about, you know, getting into dunes or this and that, and which side of the street would you go on and what? So there's a lot to be done. I think that to start a study is is wise and, but what I don't want to see and we, I mean, I don't need, again, I don't need election. We have so many studies that have been abandoned and and, you know, and so I just, I don't want to go down that path. But I do think that Park Street is a complicated problem. It's going to require a complicated answer and that's not going to be settled in three months. So to start a study, I don't see the harm in that. Um.
Yeah, this would be taking it, you know, taking that last study and taking the the next step. It would start getting into more of the. Survey work and where are the encroachment sack and where would we want to remove people's encroachments that are, would be impacted? I mean, it would be getting into more detail, not to the level of like actual design, but taking that.
But to to be over there, I mean, I, to see people walking up and down that street with a stroller and a dog. I mean, it is absolutely terrifying. It is, it is, to my mind, the most dangerous street in Saga Tuck for for pedestrians.
Be nice to see a group of people that want to see it happen, much like the Blue Star Trail Group, right?
Right, wouldn't that be nice? And and I know a lot of people that want to see it happen. I haven't seen a check. Lots of phone calls. I haven't, you know, so, yeah, but and not that, I mean, listen, people pay their tax dollars and they deserve to get something for it. And I am not, I'm I'm joking and I'm not uh, I'm saying that we need, that we need that, but we we owe something to Park, to Park, we owe something to our community, not to the residents of Park Street. To our community. This um, a a sign of a healthy community, especially something like ours, is the walkability, you know? When I go to Mount Bald Head, I live on that side. I drive my car and and I'm super lazy, but I'm not that lazy. I don't want to get hit. So anytime I want to go to Mount Bald Head or Crow's Nest, when I want to hike the Crow's Nest, I always take my car. It'd be so nice to be able to walk, but it's dangerous. It's really dangerous. It's just not a good idea.
Go ahead. Brian, if we did this study, so to Helen's point, I don't want to do a study that we're going to put on a shelf and waste, you know, thirty five. So would 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 what we learn there last for several years? Or would there be, you know, through erosion or whatever, would it make it obsolete and so therefore a huge waste of money?
No, I don't, I don't. Based on my experience, no, I don't think it would.
Asking Ryan, but go ahead. Could we just have Ryan answer her question real quick?
No, I I I think there would be a lot of values to the work that would be applicable when it's ready to be picked up. The understanding that eventually, I mean, it would need some refresh, like, so if, if they're going and and doing the level of detail, say, all right, this is where I have, uh, you know. Certain rocks and encroachments and landscaping that somebody has in this right of way area and that's, you know. It's it sits for a while and that that changes. I mean, they're going to re-verify, but I'm, I mean, so there's some cost to waiting, but. This would get in a lot more into conceptual design and get some actual, you know, before the the plan kind of presented, you know, I think it was three different options. One was just kind of shoulder widening. The other one was um, like true actual sidewalks route. And then the third option was kind of a hybrid. And I think they're they're probably indicating that a hybrid is probably most realistic, even though that's really still quite challenging. So it would kind of work towards developing that further.
Go ahead.
And would if this uh, this project, uh, after finished, the design work and all that, um, if this is something that would be needed if. We could get a grant of some kind, right? So this could be a step, if something came up the next year or two, where this is a requirement and this could be used. In a grant writing, uh.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think it's a really good point that, I mean, you, yeah, if you've moved the idea along a little bit further and some sort of grant opportunity came up. To where you could say, hey, yeah, we we actually have some conceptual plans. This is a project that, you know, it it's funding for design and and implementation, that's possible. Or if there's a group of folks, I'd, I love your idea of, if there's a group that's similar to the Blue Star Trail, Friends of Blue Star Trail, we're interested in really spearheading this. And raising some dollars to help offset.
Go ahead, Scott.
I I love the idea of sort of a hybrid design and and I'm pleased that this proposal would include sort of looking at opportunities. Where the where there might be easements or bits of space where the trail could deviate off of the, off of park, maybe a little bit. And finally get its way to where we're, where we're trying to get it. I think that would be really cool. I mean, there's so many opportunities to make this town better and safer to bike. I mean, some of us, I won't name who we are, you know, will trespass through by the red dock, through.
That all the time.
Behind the co apartments on our bikes, pop out where that little cane is across the road where there's a fire easement for the fire department to get through. And it makes your ride a lot more pleasant because you're down along the lake, you're seeing boats and cool stuff and you're a lot safer because you're not bombing down that hill from. Or ferry, you know, ferry, you know, hoping you don't crash or somebody doesn't hit you. So I mean, I would love to be creative about this.
I I think I'm I'm more leaning towards getting this done, not only because this is something we could only do maybe the next three to five years. But at least it'll give all those property owners a heads up, uh, instead of something, a project that we're continually working on. They already know years in advance that, you know, this is what the plan was and and so we could already get our feedback into what they think about it too.
What I know from your recent history even is that there's still, when it's time, they're going to be like, oh my God, this is just happening all of a sudden.
We worked on this a long time ago. I think this is a great way of taking our time doing something.
Yeah, and and uh, back to the grant, um, please abandon break. You know, if it's just particularly John Moxie of the firm has done a great job identifying grants for projects. So I think that that's something we can continue to rely on to identify opportunities because they're really in tune with that.
All right. Well, it sounds like the feedback is to include it, so we'll work on, I guess, plug that in and uh. So, okay, so that that is my uh, our our budget uh, presentation for uh, this year. Again, this is middle of a process.
Yeah, that's my comment is thank you.
Yeah.
This was comprehensive, but easy to understand. I don't think, you know, even if you're not a finance person, then anyone could follow along well and um, I I applaud your efforts. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, I know it's, I know it's in the packet, but um, I would urge staff to consider promoting this deck. Because this deck is Helen's.
Deck is good. It's easy to understand.
Understand. I don't know, I don't know if it's, if it's lends itself to an, to an infographic or not. Uh, you know, it's pretty, I mean, it's not that simple, but I I think this is an excellent piece of work.
There's no reason it couldn't go on our website, like the Parks and, Parks and Public, or the Park Five Year Plan.
But I think really to to raise this to the forefront for the community uh, is in any way possible, because it is really one of the best. Presentations I've seen.
What do you think about that, Ryan?
So uh, I I wasn't able to to finish this in time for your your meeting packet when it was going on on Friday. So we'll make sure and at least get this in the uh, regular meeting packet for Monday, so that way there's, it's there. And we'll, we'll put it on the the website along with the draft budget. Um, and then uh, from here then we'll, we'll uh, take your, um, if you have. If any of you want to meet individually to ask more detailed questions, um, you know, if if there's going to be any kind of uh, decisions on like changes. I mean, that's something that you as a body will have to had to discuss at another, either workshop, otherwise um. So we'll kind of go through that over the next uh, probably month, month and a half. And then uh, we'll work on uh, finalizing the budget to present in a public hearing. And then uh, ultimately have that public hearings, your community says, and then uh, you'll have a vote.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, there, there's a couple of items I won't go into detail today, but there's a couple of items that I'd like to see maybe opened up for discussion. Maybe other council members have some ideas too about things they'd like to see added. Um, so let's talk about that. The other thing is thank you has been echo, I'll echo some of the other comments. Um, the fact that we're seeing this two months before we have to adopt it, huge change from what we were seeing before. So thank you very much. The other thing I would suggest is, you know, your bullet points were great. What I would suggest we began thinking about is we need to start aligning our processes around this fiscal year. To do our strategic study in December and we're not, we're planning for twenty five or pardon me, for, you know, the start of twenty four in December. I think we should move that forward to like March or April, because then that better aligns with our planning and our budget discussion. And number two is the employee valuations and the city manager and the Department of Public Works should be aligned around the calendar, pardon me, around the fiscal year, not the calendar year. So I just put that out for discussion.
No, I I agree with you. In fact, I've had that discussion with with staff that um, uh, it can get a little tricky when you're setting priorities for a calendar year. But then we're planning for a fiscal year. They don't necessarily align. So I think there's some opportunity to have some of those strategic. May not be as late as like March or April, because staff has to present their budget by March, but we could look at maybe a January, early February kind of, you know, timeframe.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, because there could be some better alignment around those. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay.
Yeah, great job.
Yeah.
Really.
Thank you. Thanks, staff.
Yeah, thank you, Peter, as well.
All right, we are moving on.
So this was a team, very much a team effort. Like we, we sat down, uh, you know, I sat down with each department head. Peter was in a number of meetings. I mean, we've been back and forth, so it hasn't been a group team effort to to bring this forward, so.
Well, I think we're all very impressed. I mean, it's, it's really a lovely piece of work.
Okay, we're moving on to public comments. Um, this would be for any item you'd like to speak about. If there's somebody in the audience that would like to speak, you may do so. Yeah, I'm going with the people in the room first.
Right.
And go ahead, Dan.
Okay, Dan Fox, City of Saga Tuck, I don't remember that. I had, I know it's not a back and forth thing, but on the water asset man, water asset management. Deal, which will be is obviously essential, needs to be done and expensive. If I understood that twenty dollars, that's twenty dollars, that's two hundred forty dollars a year per water. You you talk about raising people's eyebrows and the, and the question, the kind of issue sort, I don't know that's an issue. It's obviously the city's property. Those are the ci- city owns those. But where will the bills come from if they're based on twenty dollars per thousand unit thing or whatever? The only people that keep track of that is Cal Lake. If the bills come from Cal Lake with a, with what effectively would be a surcharge of some magnitude. People are going to, I mean, this could be brilliant for you guys, because people are going to direct their ire at Cal Lake, although that's not going to last. Cal Lake will turn it around and say, no, that's not us. That we're giving that money to Saga Tuck. So I'm just suggesting there, there needs to be some sort of clarity on that upfront. And you talk about things you need to prepare the populace for. That's one you're going to need to prepare the, I mean, and I get it. I get it's necessary, a whole deal. And I think it's probably a reasonable amount of money to pay, given what's at risk and with the cost of things and so on and so forth. But getting from here to there with as few as bump, few bumps as possible is probably well advised. That's it.
Okay, anyone else in the room that would like to speak? All right, anyone online? I see Gary Medler.
Gary Medler, four sixty one Vine Street. Uh, we'd like to comment on the Park Street. I don't think you should spend any more money on another study on Park Street, particularly after the discussion today. You have no intention of spending significant money. I've been here four decades and every year it's the same story. It's going to cost too much. It's too complicated. And if you would just, at some point, you don't have to do the whole thing at once. Do so many feet per year. The people that you say have encroached on the easements is because the city has failed to maintain its easement. Do so many feet per year. The people that you say have encroached on the easements is because the city has failed to maintain its easement. And so they've done their own maintenance themselves. And if we could just get the city to maintain their easements, you wouldn't have a dangerous walking path. Because the easements are incredibly wide, as I've showed several of you with a tour of Park Street. There's only three areas where it's so narrow, you're stuck in the street. So if we could just get maintenance on a regular basis, that would be helpful. But I don't see spending money on a study being helpful or being receptive at this undecided rate. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else online? Who would like to speak? Okay, that is it for public comment. We are now on to the closed session. If I could have a motion to move into closed session.
I'll, 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 I'll take it, Mayor. I move to move into closed session pursuant to MCL one five point two six eight E to consult with the city attorney regarding trial strategy regarding the lawsuit filed against the city by Maplewood Hotel. Captioned Maplewood Hotel Corporation versus City of Sagatuck and interim city manager Ryan Cummins. Case number two four dash six eight seven nine five dash CZ. Because discussing the pending litigation in open session may have a detrimental financial impact on the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, um, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Baldwin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Muncy.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's kind of like a filibuster, yeah, you know, we don't want to.
All right, we are back. Okay.
Do we need to make a motion though to direct counsel? We do, don't we?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
One moment, we. Okay. Yeah, if anyone is online, uh, there's nobody in the room, so I apologize. Uh, anyone online, we are now back into open session. And Mr. Muncy has a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to allow our city attorney to, um, um, to negotiate the settlement agreement, which we have just spoken of. Uh, I think, I'm sorry.
Execute.
Execute the settlement agreement, uh, between Maplewood Hotel Corporation and the City of Sagatuck, as stated.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? And Jamie, do you have everything you need? Okay, no further discussion? Okay, um, this is a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Muncy?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. Um, we do have a number of correspondence, but those will be included in the May twenty-second, um, packet.
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. I keep doing that with May and April. Uh, that will be included in the April twenty-second packet. So now we are on to council comments and I'll start on the other side this time. Gregory, if you would like to start.
Not much, but um, it, thanks, thanks for, um, thanks for working together. Yeah, it's quite obvious to everybody that we don't always agree, but we do work together and we always find a happy medium and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Gregory. Scott.
Uh, no comment.
Okay.
Nothing, thank you.
Uh, I would echo council member Muncy's comments. Um, sometimes these, uh, situations are difficult on all sides. And the fact that we were able to come up with compromise in such short order, I think speaks well to our city staff as well as our legal representation, as well as the plaintiff to get to where we are. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo the, um, you know, we managed to pull it out and work together and I, I'm happy for that. So, thanks.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Adjourned.